All meeting in order, start the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Teresa, please take the roll.
Okay, Jones.
Here.
Horn.
Yes.
Keel.
There.
Bowlin.
Yeah.
Barons. Here. Matson. Here. And Jas.
Yes. Any additions or actions on the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none will vote. Jas.
Yes.
Barons.
Yes.
Keel.
Yes.
Horn.
Yes.
Bowlin.
Yes.
Matson.
Yes.
Approval of the minutes from the six-four meeting?
Make a motion to approve. Six-four meeting minutes.
Oh, sorry, second now. Any discussion? Hearing none will vote. Matson.
Yes.
Bowlin.
Yes.
Horn.
Yes.
Keel.
Yes.
Barons.
Yes.
Jas.
Yes.
Alright, bills are in your packet. Any action from the council?
Make a motion to approve the bill presented. Second.
Any discussion?
I've got a question on, this is an odd one, but, peddlers. Page six, there's a, so, what's our action there? When we get a peddler license, we submit it to the paper then, is that?
No, so they'd have to come and get a license from the city in order to go door-to-door to sell anything.
Gotcha.
They come in, peddler's license is fifty dollars for thirty days, so they could go around for thirty days without fifty. Anybody who's pedaling has to come in and show us their South Dakota sales tax license. We take a copy of their driver's license to show who they are. There's an application they fill out, basically, who they are, what company, you know, so we got their contact information and...
This was for, at the beginning of the season, I just put a notice in the paper just to kind of warn the public.
Okay, gotcha.
This is the procedure, that's what that, yeah.
We can't do that, this is once a year at the beginning of the season, so...
Yeah.
But what, on average, what do we get a year?
Couple, maybe. Two, three, maybe, a year, it's usually kind of somebody selling books or cleaners or something like that. Yeah, same, but books, yeah.
That's control.
Sounds like that Saturday night, I just get pretty...
Anything else? Hearing nothing, we will vote. Matson.
Yes.
Bowlin.
Yes.
Horn.
Yes.
Keel.
Yes.
Barons.
Yes.
Jas.
Yes.
Alright, any public comments from anyone not on the agenda? Alright, seeing none, we'll move forward. Applications agreement hearings, resolutions, ordinances, first up, special event application for East Street, E-sixth Street Block Party on July 5th. Miss Jenny. Same as last year?
Yep.
The staff said they would be sure.
We're only having a fifty-nine minute, um, it's one P.M. though, eleven fifty, that was eleven.
Yeah, they don't want to stretch into the next day. They don't want to have to get a two-day permit, because we charge them.
Make a motion to approve the special event application for the East Sixth Third Block Party.
Second.
Any other discussion? Hearing none will vote. Jas.
Yes.
Barons.
Yes.
Keel.
Yes.
Horn.
Yes.
Bowlin.
Yes.
Matson.
Yes.
Alright. You bet. Next up, special event application for the Alquist Auction to be held on July 13th. They're looking to have us shut off a section of Fifth Street so they can set up their goods or their stuff to sell.
Uh, Chuck.
Sure.
I'm totally not...
Yeah, you want to come on up?
Not too often I go with this.
That's right.
My husband passed away in February.
Yep.
And Chuck Sutton and I would like to, he's an auctioneer.
Yep.
Would like to close off between Mont and Fifth, that Fifth Street, all the way just to the alley.
Okay.
For that day of the auction.
Yep, I see they, Teresa included the map. Any questions from the council or any action?
Motion to approve special event application for Alquist Auction.
Second.
Any other discussion?
What's, what do we do with the, who puts the...
Barricades.
Barricades.
We'll get them dropped.
Yeah.
You'll get them dropped?
Yeah.
And then what do we do when it's done, because it is on a Saturday?
Just take them down and throw them in the yard.
Lay them on the side, lay them up on the, or on the boulevard, the guys will come and get them.
No price, no, I mean, it's...
We usually charge a million, but we'll foreclose.
I think I would foreclose that.
We'll frame them down, put them up. Alright.
My, my question was, are these just irons and things from your household, or are they bringing things to him?
You know, my husband was a mechanic, and he loved cars and stuff, he even knew me. So it's most, it's, I would say ninety-nine percent is ours.
Yeah.
My son-in-law is going to bring a washing dryer.
Robbie, right?
Yep.
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, since she's, since she said that.
Robbie Schulte, yeah.
I gotta rethink this.
Well, don't take him in seriously.
Well, they used to live on my street, so I gotta, you know, I gotta be kind of nice to them. Anything else? Hearing none will vote. Matson.
Yes.
Bowlin.
Yes.
Horn.
Yes.
Keel.
Yes.
Barons.
Yes.
Jas.
Yes.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
Alright, third up, special event application, Relia Bank Dakota Back to School Bash.
If I could stand up, I guess, um, I'm Kyle Lancers, I manage the whole brand in town.
Good.
Um, we've been doing this event for years and T, and we've just been trying to reach out to other brand, other towns now that run.
Alright.
Basically, we have food delivered, we'll have pizza, continuous delivery throughout the evening, we'll have freezies, and there'll be a DJ, and inflatables, and I had an email of forty-seven bullet points on here from the mall.
Yeah, that's, we got it, basically that.
Thanks if you guys move, I appreciate that, so I'm trying not to be...
Yeah, we roll, yeah.
I was reading about this earlier, and, and with some of my kids about it, and they, this is a very good idea, so...
Yep. So, DWJ, Earl, Dave Johnson, he's day on, and he's been harping on us for a few years to get it going, and his sons are head of marketing now, so I get to get it going, and here I am.
There you go.
Yes, I'll make a motion to approve special event application for the Relia Bank Dakota Back to School Bash on August 6th.
Second.
Any other discussion? If not, we'll vote. Jas.
Yes.
Barons.
Yes.
Keel.
Yes.
Horn.
Yes.
Bowlin.
Yes.
Matson.
Yes.
Alright, thanks, good luck.
Appreciate it.
Alright, let's move on to reports. First up is the Fire Chief Report, uh, he is coming next month.
Yeah, it'll be next month.
Yep. Report is in the packet. Their number of calls seems to be holding pretty steady. What's good or bad? Alright, next up is Economic Development Director's report, Amy Farr.
Thank you, my information is in your packet. I'm excited to say that we did bring Jordan back as our intern chair, and she's already been very helpful with a couple of projects we've already presented to her. Um, the other information is the Budget Finance Committee has met already once, so they'll be bringing a tentative budget to the board tomorrow for review. And then we've also already had a construction committee meeting, just to go over some of the parcels that are looking at being sold. I did, over the weekend, also have two different individuals reach out regarding some parcels, either in that industrial park or within the city, so...
That's good. Um, SMGA is holding their social here on the twenty-sixth. I wonder, I'm going to be gone, if the council would like, any of you guys would like to attend, that'd be great, they're going to have it at the brewery.
Correct.
Um, and if you're going, more of you are going to attend, then to get us over a quorum, maybe you should post that, so maybe let Teresa know if you could come, it's the twenty-sixth.
Yeah, I could send out an email invite, and get a response that way.
Why don't you do that, just to make sure?
Okay.
I thought of that today when I read through this.
That way we can find out.
Can you send it to me as well?
Yeah, um, I believe it's five o'clock, can I have it in here for you guys?
That's in lieu of their monthly meeting, they're just having a social.
They have a date picture, or just a date?
I did try to scare him off of that date since I was going to be gone.
That's the date?
Been doing good, so...
I'll find out because they're...
No ball. And no ball, I'll be the last guy, so that's right.
I will find out and get that to you, it's gonna be...
Alright, any other questions or anything else, Amy?
Nope, unless you guys have questions for me.
Oh, sorry about that, yep, I had one, this may be a dumb question too, what's the M-A-E-D-C?
Oh, Matson, it's Mid-American Economic Development.
Okay, gotcha, okay.
It's a conference.
Now, has she sponsored you to go then?
Correct.
Awesome, thank you.
Normally it would cost three hundred and ninety-nine dollars, but they sponsored me for it, so...
Perfect. For the golf outing, I recognize Wynne. Right, was that you? Yeah. But there was two others that you golfed with, and I've been asked a couple times randomly, who's Amy golfing with, and I said, I don't know.
Um, so we get paired up with different individuals through the SMGA Golf Tournament. Um, this year we were paired with two individuals from Quick Star, Quick Trip.
Oh, yeah.
So, we golfed with them, and I will say Wynne was very instrumental in our golf game of being improved, I guess. Um, she gave some pointers, and the guys really turned it around after the first two or three holes that they were golfing, so... I appreciate Wynne being there and telling them how to stand, so it improved.
Those who can play, those who can't teach.
Teach. Man, who's true is that?
I will say we all had our strengths and weaknesses, some could putt, some could drive, and some could hit in the fairway, so it worked out really well for all of us.
Those that can't teach, inspect.
That too.
There's a third category. Alright, thank you, Amy.
Thank you.
Next up, our Chamber Director for her monthly, uh...
Yes, I so look forward to this.
I bet you do.
Stand before you guys, it's the spotlight of my home. My report is in your packet, and I wish I would have read it before I stood up here, because I really don't know what I wanted to share with you. Um, what have I been doing this week? Uh, I met with a gentleman that's going to be our, hopefully, um, our facilitator for our strategic planning session with our board, which is really exciting for me to have that opportunity. So I'm waiting for my board to approve that, we don't have any meetings in July. Um, so I'm giving them a few hours back in their summer to enjoy. Um, so we're, I know the budget request is due July fifteenth, and I think I've gotten pretty much all the feedback from them as I can, so I will be presenting that accordingly. For the month of July, I'm scheduling one-on-ones with my board, some of which I haven't had the opportunity to spend significant time with, and also going out into the community and doing pop buys, and visiting with membership, um, kind of just visiting about what they see the Chamber direction going and what they want to see. I started with the legacy team, you'll be getting a call from me, um, to have coffee or lunch, or maybe just to sit down thirty minutes or so. Um, I want to take that July as an opportunity to do that, to meet some more of the membership, so... Looking forward to that opportunity, I'm bringing Gail and popcorn as part of the pop buy, just popping in the seat.
Oh, that's clever.
It is not clever, you know, I wish I could take credit for it. Um, but, no, that's about it, I'm looking forward, in July, my, um, six months, six-month review is coming up. Are you guys can believe it?
Oh, boy, that's a...
Wow, it's a tough one, I know, I put, I put this, um, put it to Teresa that I'm like, we gotta put significant markers in for my six months so that I know that I'm achieving things, so I said we're going to put some smart goals on the books, so, smart is good, so...
Um, can I follow up a little bit on our conversation?
Absolutely.
So, last week in prep for, Deb and I, for Jamboree Days, we thought, well, let's go to the Discover Hartford app. Well, there's nothing on there, and so after trying to search around and get a, find a couple things, my frustration level hit, so I thought, I think I'm going to call the Chamber Director. And so we had, we had a nice recipe, what I said to Wynne was, we have to get this thing more usable with information like Jamboree Days should have, when you open at this time of the year, that should just pop, just instantly pop up. Or now with the Block Party, you open the app and it should just pop up. The technology's there, we just got to figure out, we got to start using it, because the way it is right now, it should be removed.
Yes.
I'm sorry, it's not very good.
Yeah.
And, uh...
I hear you.
So, and I asked Wynne, I said, if she would like, and the board would be okay with it, I'm going to go sit down with the Chamber Board and just kind of throw, throw some stuff by them. If nothing else, I've spent my whole career being a salesman and a marketer, so I can probably, you know,
Yeah.
talk with their group and give them, maybe bounce some stuff off them and see what they think.
And I did explain that the, the Jamboree Days is not a member of the Chamber, and the Discover Hartford app is a Chamber member-specific app.
I know, I know.
Um, I, and also, I'm, yeah, it's just Chamber-specific, and they're not a member, so...
So do you have to be a member of the Chamber to have access to the app, or not?
No.
Okay.
No.
To a community.
Just an active member.
Okay. Right, so that's what, I think that's part of one.
Yes.
That we got to try, kind of get over, so, anyway, that just, to give you guys an update, that's, it just so happened, and there's some of those buttons, you hit them, and it pops, you were, kicked me right out, and I thought, every time it hit the button, it kicked me out, I'm thinking, huh, this doesn't work very well.
I've spent many, many, many hours on that app.
Yeah.
It's as less user-friendly on the backside as it is on the front side.
Okay, anyway.
It is, it is a work in progress, and it's, um, but that was the reason that Jamboree Days wasn't there.
So for sure, when you get around here, August meeting, make sure that, I know you said you, you were going to make it out of it, make sure that I get a...
Absolutely.
That it's okay with them that, that I could come, and I should like to come to their meeting.
Do you want the Chamber Board?
Yeah, I'll start with that.
Just the executives?
I'll start with the executive board.
Okay.
Might as well start right at the top.
Okay, sounds good.
Alright.
Would it be worth the discussion to just give some local organizations Chamber membership as a courtesy? I mean, if everybody gets a stamp, we're even going to ask for their funds from the same source, maybe we could all work together?
Yeah.
Maybe, maybe it's a worthy cause.
Oh, sure.
Yeah.
It's a good idea. So, to that, to that point, just, um, a courtesy membership.
Right.
Okay.
Just a thought.
Yeah.
I'm sure it's not a real moneymaker.
Sounds good.
Alright, any other comments or questions for Wynne? Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Alright, next up, I told him I wasn't going to say it, I'm going to say it anyway, most exciting time of the evening, say the engineer report.
Good evening, everyone, update on general engineering items, we've had a few plats and site plans come back, and recommended approval, and have some revisions on each of those. Um, moving on to project updates, um, on the quality resource recovery facility, uh, they are about forty percent done with the precast walls going up, um, so they're making good progress there despite the wind and the three pores left.
Yep.
And, and they have three pores left of the interior of their, so that tank is almost done, ready for that process piping to be installed. Utility installation of the main tranq fine still on hold for July. At this point, I think a lot of it is waiting for us until water to go down, so that it's a bit easier for construction, um, but everything is, is moving along as it should per schedule. Um, the bike interrail plans have been submitted to the city, completed and registered on shelf for future construction. Um, highway dirty water, they did a couple of comments from the State Environment to review, uh, they want a couple of plans just, uh, in addition to the construction documents, just to show some of the flood plans and wet ones as part of their review, so we are accommodating, accommodating those requests accordingly. Uh, and additionally, we have updated that, that tentative construction schedule pending their approval, so, way since now, uh, we get approval from them within the next couple of weeks, we'll plan on getting your approval for bidding on the sixteenth, um, and then proceeding from there with bids and construction. Lastly, Western Avenue did submit final plans to the state, um, end of last week, but got word from their coordinator, just had a couple collateral patients they needed yesterday, so working through those as well, and plan to have those to them by the end of the week. That was all I had for project and general updates, happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for mine?
The utility install for that, um, that's the stuff by Mickelson, right?
Correct, all the, all the piping there?
Yeah, yeah, gotcha. When was that date that they were trying to shoot to come back?
Uh, mid-July is what they had planned, I think.
Gotcha, oh, sounds good. It's got to be really wet down there. Go on.
That's sure.
I mean, it's crazy wet down there. Alright, anything else for mine? If not, thank you very much, Public Works Superintendent Craig Wagner.
Um, not a lot of changes in my report, uh, like I said in my report, all the lift stations are up and running. Uh, sports complex, we did get the building kind of offstate, we found out that that power line going to the scoreboard is not going to be in our way, so we don't have to move that, actually it's going to help. Um, otherwise, we're to, we got to expose that line so we can dig underneath it and move that water line, so we're going to try to work on that either later this week or first part of next week, and then we'll be able to start digging footings and get moving on that. That's about all I got in the report, we did start laying out some pickleball courts and that stuff, we're looking a couple tomorrow if it works out, just to see for spaces, something like that, so, we'll be getting that, going on that too, so...
Awesome. What all this rain, is it a little guns?
We're full, but we are discharging, so hopefully, we'll be close to being done Friday with discharge, and we're starting moving two ponds at one time down to that one that's empty, so...
Um, does it help all the rainwater, does that help with your numbers on your, nothing, doesn't really change it?
No, it's, it dirts the ponds more than anything.
Really?
Yeah. Because it washes them.
All the stuff that it, oh.
On the pickleball courts, is that, are they intended to fit kind of where the gravel patch is?
Yeah. Yep.
Did we just like give up on the basketball court?
Basketball court's still there.
I know, did we give up on it?
Oh, no, we're going to paint, no, we're going to paint that too, so we went down and measured it today, just to see what we need to get, if we get two courts in there, we are just one, so... Hope we are going to get that painted this week, so...
Is the, is the pool hole marked? We had a leak last year.
Yeah, as far as I know.
Two years.
I don't know down the pool.
Two years ago, I have? It's already been two years ago. Yeah. Why?
As far as I know, it's, it's old, so...
Yeah, everything's going good now?
Seems to be, yeah.
Good.
Keel's pretty much takes care of the pool, so I don't watch.
I was turning back one, because they wouldn't even look at me. He doesn't respond.
I, I was thinking more like the hoops themselves, and...
Oh, uh, as far as getting them up.
The weeds in the concrete?
Wood hoops, just a, we've been pretty busy, everything else, we can start looking at that though.
Yeah.
It's just one of those things, we're going to put these really nice new pickleball courts, and then right next to it, we're going to have our basketball court. That would be pretty heavy rock. Be nice to clean it up if that's not a big project.
Yep, we can certainly look at that continuing. Anything else for me?
Well, I don't know, anybody got anything else, let's go, man, we got Craig on the... We got you on the seat. Alright, thanks, Craig.
Yep.
Oh, did Teresa ask you about the alley back there?
Yep, we're going to get back to the carriage, so...
Yeah. Thank you, sorry. Is that it, Mayor? That's it, sorry, just, we talked about that Friday when we left.
What about the alley?
Well, all of the water runs to two houses across here that just flooded their driveways.
Sub-pump from the senior center.
Run right across, and then with all the rain, it's just up there.
It's just been, yeah, really down there.
Anyway, I was asked by, or two, you know, or two people, they come to the, you know...
I know how they are.
Alright, thanks, Craig. Alright, next up, Ms. Karen.
Yeah, my information's in the packet, um, don't really have anything to add. Um, good news, First Interstate Bank extended our awesome interest rate for another six months, so that'll get us through the year, so...
Good.
I will follow up again mid-December, and hopefully they'll be doing it.
And I would assume the end of May, pretty good jag of money, what's the, do we have stuff that hadn't been paid yet, or?
It's just, it's just so hard to compare year to year, because there's just so much...
I mean, that's a big, yeah, three months.
Going on, and they sort of, I mean, wastewater plants are huge projects, so...
We checked to right flank and we're done. But I just haven't taken this one.
I know, I'll react to normal.
I mean, I can...
No, that's fine.
Could go analyze it.
No, no, that's fine.
It's just, not comparing apples to apples, I mean, it's just hard.
Must have paid my water bill.
One of those big numbers coming in and out.
Yeah, I mean, one payoff is, you know, over a million dollars if the check hasn't cleared yet.
Right.
But it's still sitting in the bank, you know, so...
Yeah, alright, anybody got any questions for Karen? Alright, thank you, Teresa, City Administrators' report.
Just a couple of dates for my report on Western Avenue funding, um, we are in the process. Meyer Henry Sergeant is putting together the, so, the resolution for the sales tax bond. I'll come to you guys at your next meeting, uh, just to be honest, pass the resolution saying we're going to issue sales tax for the, a sales tax bond for that project as we discuss. Um, and then, um, working on the application for the re-loan that I think should be finished this week too, should have everything put together, just working on the projected financials for them, and then we'll get that submitted, and hopefully get on their docket, and hopefully we can get a loan through them as well. Um, and as you guys know, the, the tour of the wastewater plant is supposed to be tonight, it's going to be postponed to the sixteenth, so, not our next meeting, but two meetings, same time, five-thirty, meet out there, hopefully it'll be drier, because right now it's kind of a muddy mess, so, that's where you go to the sixteenth. Um, otherwise, uh, today, I had in my report that the Western Ave, Western Avenue traffic study that the county is conducting with the MPO, we had a kickoff meeting today, basically, just kind of gathering the information, we'll continue to work with the engineers on that, they're going to do, of course, traffic studies and, um, analyze crash data, speeds on there, basically kind of put together a study with suggested maybe improvements of what we could do along Western Avenue to make it safer, if that includes stop signs, lightings, whatever, I, I don't know what the study will come up with, but we're starting that, the study is supposed to be completed by the end of this year, so...
Are they doing their, like, the county-specific part of Western Avenue?
So we're doing from Mickelson Road, which is a little bit into the city, we're doing from Mickelson Road all the way up to Central States, so it's pretty much the, the county highway there, so... Basically, you know, when we, if you guys remember that, that we're on the, the board at that time, when we were talking about doing Western Avenue, you know, wiping that out and doing our portion, we had went to the county to see, hey, would you be interested in making improvements up to the least highway thirty-eight? Well, when we went to them, they said, we don't have funding for that, so, no, we're not going to do anything. They said the first step for them to do any kind of project is they have to have a study done, because that's what the state requires anymore, is you've got to have studies for everything, so... This would be the first step to at least get him on the docket for future improvements, so that was kind of what started this whole studying process. Um, otherwise, um, Art and I attended another wastewater regelization meeting last week with, um, the other communities and their engineers, I think we're trying to make a little progress, or kind of one step at a time. Right now, we're mainly focused on how we're going to organize, how we're going to set up the organization, I guess, whether it's a sewer district or not, or how the agreements are going, how we're going to work together to basically take advantage of this grant funding that came out from the Feds. Um, it's going to be a long process.
Right.
There'll be several meetings, but we are... It's gonna be a long process, there'll be several meetings, but we are continuing to keep meeting and to, to move it forward. Everybody still is on board with wanting to make this work and, and getting on our system, so. You know, in the end, it'll be a win-win for everybody, so.
What's the deadline for the grant application?
Ten years, we got, so.
To apply?
No.
To expensive.
Spend the money.
Yes, yeah.
But the first big step is what they call a work plan.
Yep.
And in order to have a work plan, they gotta know how we're gonna, how's it gonna be structured.
How we are.
So the money is earmarked for our project?
Yes.
How much?
Twenty-three million, I thought.
Twenty-three point something.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, every, I think everyone is in agreement that we gotta figure out how to make, make this thing work. But as you guys know, and as you've instructed me, I tell them whenever we meet, you have to understand Hartford's gonna retain ownership of the wastewater treatment plant, period. You know, so, because that question kind of circles, and I have to stop them and say, you guys gotta remember, we're gonna keep control of this thing. It's, our citizens are paying the bill for this thing.
So which organization, because you have, so you have, you get, you get money from the federal government, right?
Yeah.
So the money's coming.
Then that goes through to SMGA, you have CPod.
Well, so SMGA originally applied for the funds, but they can't get the money awarded to them.
Okay.
It's gotta be a, a different entity, it's gotta be a municipality, or it's gotta be a, a district, a sewer district, or something like that. SMGA can't take the funds, so that's why we're working on organization.
So that money has to be.
And CPod is just helping administer the funds and help with all the, the work plan or whatnot.
And CPod can't take the money.
No, CPod can't take the money.
It has to be one of the municipalities or.
What about like the Minion County?
Commission.
The, the Minion County Water, I mean, they, they seem, because they've got a water, I'm just curious, when they, when we say the money's earmarked for us.
Yeah.
What does that mean? Like, is this, I mean, is the goal of this federal money to get to the hands of Hartford, South Dakota, to regionalize, is that the primary goal?
Yes.
So the way the grant was written, it is for conveyance lines, and it specifically says Crooks, Colton.
Yeah.
And Lions, to hook on to the Hartford wastewater treatment, so it says that in the grant, yes.
Okay, that's good to know.
So it isn't like somebody from Cook County can go and take money for their wastewater plant or whatnot.
Or Sioux Falls or something.
It is very specific to our project.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
And the county commission is interested in talking to us too.
I'm sure they are.
Which makes me a little bit.
I'm sure they are, that's why it considers food.
Yeah.
There's gonna be ends of the cookie.
And you could imagine when there's that big of a pile of money, people are interested in seeing how they can help us.
I don't think that, that we are helpless.
Yep.
So I, I do think, one of the, one of the comments was, we could actually be the grant. We could actually ask Hartford to get the money. I don't know if that's a, I don't know if that's a good idea or not.
Well, there'd obviously be some expense with that. We would front all of those costs, is what it feels like.
Yes, we'd have to figure out how that's gonna work, but then we would own the, we would own the system.
And this grant is only an eighty-twenty-two, so there's a twenty percent share that has to figure out how, where that, we come up with that. Whether it's through the state's SRF loan, or if part of our expense for this plant could be used for it, those are questions that have come up too.
Well, if like Colton's gonna hook up, shouldn't they? I guess I don't know enough about the grants, but let's just say we have a community wants to hook up, why wouldn't they front those costs?
Yes.
And that's been talked, yeah.
I believe that's right.
Why the hell would we act as a bank?
Yes, and that's the problem, if, that we, if we put it under Hartford, then we're on the hook for that twenty percent. Rather than if Colton just does their portion or it or Crooks or whatnot, so. Yeah, so that, yeah, there's always a lot of questions to talk, that's what we're trying to figure out.
Coordination.
I will say, I. Travis was there, so was Amy and Teresa when we had the deal at the Rotary Club. And I've started to use the joke about, you ever seen cars, our dog chasing a car? We've got the car, and it always gets a great laugh, but when I told it that Friday, they're all looking at me like, oh, yeah.
Yeah, nobody.
You know, because what do you do? That's the question. And every time we talk about one thing, three more questions come up, that's it. This is gonna be a process, this is gonna be a process.
So, yeah, there will be several more meetings and figuring it out, but we're, we're continuing to move ahead. I think we're talking about monthly meetings, so we're, we're moving ahead.
Yeah.
Aren't there other regional water systems or?
Well, there's water systems, from a sewer standpoint, we're kind of, we're kind of working off Sioux Falls' model, because they've done that.
Yeah.
They've hooked people up, and one of the reasons, when Sioux Falls talked to us and when they talked with Crooks, that we did not go with them, is because they have ultimate control. So that was said the other day, and then they all turned and looked at me and they said, wait, it's gonna be the same deal, you guys are gonna tell us what we can do or can't do. And I finally had to say, yeah, that's what, you know, that's what's gonna happen at the end of the day. So that kind of, you know, they're all looking at me like, well, what, you're saying that their idea isn't good, and now you're saying that we're gonna be doing the same thing, you know?
It's gonna, well, think about a little different setup, though. So Sioux Falls, for their wastewater regelization, they charge by the meter. So if T wants to hook on, it's like, how many meters do you got in the city, and it's so much, you know, basically a meter, and that's what they charge you, so much a meter. We're kind of talking about, okay, we got this X amount of gallons we can take. You know, Col, how much of that allocation do you want for you? So, you know, they can say they want, you know, a percentage of that, so they can figure in what they currently need, and then maybe their future growth. So as long as they're within their allocation, they can say yes or no to a project.
Right.
And if they go over their allocation, then they'll have to come to us at that time and say, hey, we, we need more, if you have more or whatnot, but. So we're thinking it's a little bit different setup that we will give them allocations, you know, from our.
I guess I don't wanna get too much into this right now, I'm gonna hold my questions for now.
Okay.
Because it's a long conversation.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot more discussion, a lot more questions.
Oh, yeah. Every meeting that we've went to, when we leave, Teresa and I all the way back to Hartford saying, well, what about this? What about that? I mean, because it does, it creates, every time we talk, it creates more questions, so. And it's still a great idea, and it's still a plan we gotta pursue, because we have this opportunity to tap this big pile of money.
In the end, it's, it's still, it's a great project, we just need to figure out how to implement it.
Yeah. I think if you look at the Lewis and Clark water system as a template, Sean?
Yeah.
If the city Hartford took that approach, and we became the Lewis and Clark, just for wastewater sources.
Yeah.
We'd have to hire a choice of ours. To kind of.
Manage it.
Or to manage it, period, go to DC, you know, ask for funds, but the funds are allocated, so that, that's a big.
Yeah, that was a big hurdle, yeah.
But the city Hartford at the front, hundreds of thousands of dollars in attorney fees, payroll, and. So if we can get a third party involved, so.
Yeah, well, that is kind of our next step, is that, where, our next meeting, we're gonna have Todd Meyer Henry there, who has helped set up some of these different districts and kind of. Walk us through what our options are, what our, the different scenarios are, and try to figure out what the best way is to, to kind of keep moving forward, so.
And he works with two or three of these cities, so.
Different, yeah.
We think we can get that first meeting kind of, you know, for a fairly good, fairly, fairly good price.
So is that a good?
Maybe.
I was saying, I think this first one's gonna be free meat after that.
Who knows, so.
Who's that gonna be with, Teresa?
What?
Who's that meeting gonna be with?
Um, so Todd Meyer Henry, he.
For us, like.
Oh, it'll be the, the group, it'll be the group with the mayors.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Have we, have we approved, like, paying the goes up to these meetings yet?
Um, no, that's why I said that.
I'm sorry, that.
I said we approved, like, the mayor, paying the mayor.
Oh, yeah.
Obviously we approve it to go, but at some point, this is a little bit kind of above and beyond normal mayor, mayoral.
And this is gonna be continued, it's.
Well, let's think about that, yeah.
Talking about ground points.
Um, and that's, the rest is in my report, do you have any other questions?
Sorry, we didn't really get into it, but that's. It's exciting, I, as, don't let our, how we're talking about this scare you off. It is really, I mean, everybody's really pumped when we're setting out the table, it's, it's exciting.
It, it's a historical.
Oh, yeah, it's like, yeah.
It changes the trajectory of this area for, you know.
Oh, years.
The next fifty years, short term.
That's what I said at the Rotary, that's what's one of my biggest comment. This changes Western really hot county for fifty years, you know, if we make this thing happen, so, yeah, it's huge. Somebody else will probably be the mayor by then, fifty years.
Can't wait, hope so.
Cindy, that's one of those keep it in your head.
Fifty years.
Yeah, I think I'm already old enough to age out of it. Alright, we've had Gibson said here for a while, let's move down to new business. Review and approve the request to allocate twenty-twenty-four operating budget funds for the Humboldt Ambulance. Twenty-three thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars.
That is exactly correct. Evening, folks, Tim Even, Humboldt Fire and Ambulance, as stated here, two requests for release of funds. Last year, just kind of a, a look back, we ended up a little bit lower on call volume. Not the trajectory of anybody else in the county, but our, our call volume dropped off just a little bit, down to, oh, it was probably five years ago, down to two-hundred-and-ninety calls, I suppose, of service. This year, I just looked at numbers, and if it follows suit the way it is, we'll be right back to the three-thirty, three-hundred-and-forty calls for this year, so.
Okay.
We had a good run, or I guess it wouldn't be good, a lower run, but good for everybody in the community, I guess, when we don't have a call. Um, so, yeah, that's where we're at right now, um, a couple things for us, uh, one thing we do have coming at us, we gotta put a new roof on the fire hall. It developed some leaks, so we got that, uh, coming at us, and not on the ambulance side of things, but on the fire side of things. We got a new wildland for fighting grass fires ordered, and that's due to be delivered here late summer. Don't need it right now, it's raining, so.
Got much grass wire to fire that fire played right now, yeah.
But no, I guess we got any questions for you?
Anybody got any questions for Tim, or action from the council on this?
When was that building built, Tim?
Uh, nineteen eighty-eight.
Oh, geez.
Yeah.
I thought it was way older than that.
That's on the roof, no. Uh, we put an addition on and tried as they made to put a roof on an addition, and made it sealed, and it wasn't hurting, so.
True.
Next step was to re-roof it, that's what we're doing.
I'll make a motion to approve the release of twenty-twenty-four budget allocation for the Humboldt Ambulance, twelve-three thousand, six hundred and twenty-five.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Jazz?
Yes.
Barrett?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Bowlin?
Yes.
That's it.
Yes.
Alright, thanks, Tim.
Thank you.
Sorry, we got in the weeds there on wastewater. Yeah, held you up.
You probably wonder why Humboldt.
Well, Humb, hey, Humboldt's invited to hook on. Humb, Humboldt's invited to hook under our wastewater.
Take the message back.
That's the wastewater.
No, we're not. They're not?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll open that can. Alright, next up, review and approve preliminary plan for North Community Second Division. This is the land that lies north where we're putting the roads in, right?
Yep, correct, it'd be the HADF's land, it's right around the water tower there, so these are their preliminary plans. They went to P and Z last week, and they reviewed them, and it was recommended approval to you guys. They had also been reviewed by the city engineers to conform with our design standards and companies, and all look good.
Motion to approve preliminary plan, preliminary plan for North Community Second Division.
Second.
You have multiple seconds. Any discussion?
There, there was some discussion about, for lack of a better term, like an association fee for some of the ponds that were projected to be needed.
Yes.
And been able to firm of that agreement.
We are still working on it, we have calls into one individual that has done one in Brandon, and just waiting for that return call. We've called her for two days in a row and sent an email, so. We'll hopefully have that figured out, I'm hoping, by Friday.
So there's, there's probably somebody that's done something very similar.
I reached out to three different economic development offices, and two of them said they've never heard of such a thing, and one did say, in our community, we do have one.
Yeah.
Um, so we're trying to work that into the deal right now.
Okay.
It's kind of like an HOA for residential development, right?
Correct.
Okay, I'm, I'm sure Naps Landing maybe had a big pond there, I'm sure.
I don't think that's ever.
There's, there's one in T. It's right in the center of the block, is that where you're thinking?
Um, no, more than much, Brian.
Is there?
There's one.
Just one of them right around.
But I can check on T too.
Yeah, I just, if you need.
Nope, that works, I appreciate it.
Alright, anything else? If not, we'll vote, that's it.
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Barrett?
Yes.
Jazz?
Yes.
Alright, next up, uh. Review approve change orders for Twelfth and Oakes Street. We just started moving dirt and we're a change order.
I know, already we got change.
Yeah, I'm a little concerned about that, a little bit.
Well, the first one's pretty simple, change order number one is just for, per the grant, we have to put an EDA sign out there, so. This would be for to put signage, sign-dash, and already out there, so it's to add it basically to our grant. Um, it'll be under the grant, so it'll only be ten percent cost to us.
What's EDA again?
Economic Development Association, that's who we got the grant to.
I was, I was thinking ADA, so my mind was going somewhere.
Yeah, why are we? And it will be all ADA compliant. But, yeah, so.
So the first one, the city shares is ten percent, is three, seven-hundred-and-sixty-one dollars.
Is there a, um, in the contract, is there like a map? I mean, I just, I, I've recruited in construction for so long, so I, I hear a lot about change orders, and I always hear, when I talk to project managers, that's where they make their money. I mean, I just, I, but so I guess my question is, and maybe it's a question more for, for the engineer's side, is there a point to where, I mean, you guys have to approve change orders, right? Do you guys approve that?
We, we review them.
And so what does that mean? You're saying, yes, this is a, an applicable, this change order makes sense?
So actually, our engineers on the project is, is like, yeah.
Oh.
The change orders review of.
So this change order for this project, um, was just kind of some last minute coordination changes for the project itself, and all prices are fairly reasonable in terms of. What you see with the market price for the traction, and there's no city any available word, barrel on this one, for lack of a better term, sorry.
No, I like that, that's the way I talk, so.
Um, just, this was last minute coordination between HADF and this Twelfth and Oaks project, and so. Looking forward at the project, we're not expecting really any other state accredited change order, uh, for the city, for this project. Uh, this is just some coordination that happened at the last minute.
Okay, so my question with that, and I don't wanna beat a dead horse here, is, is there a point to where, I guess, a change order is a change order, so it's a change of the contract, right, essentially?
Correct.
But as long as you guys are keeping the guidelines on that and making sure, obviously taking the HADF and, HADF and city to your best interests of.
Typically, what I expect from administrative projects is as long as like the change orders are, sometimes other costs of the project, as long as you're staying with that five percent of the original contract price, you're gonna stay pretty good.
Okay, thank you. Alright, motion to approve change order one, number one for Twelfth and Oaks Street project. Any more discussion on that one? Hearing none, we'll vote. Horn?
Yes.
Bowlin?
Yes.
That's it.
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Barrett?
Yes.
Jazz?
Yes.
Alright, number two is right behind it, that is for. Five-hundred-and-twelve thousand or something, eleven-thousand, two-hundred-and-fifty-one dollars, and really, it's more, this change order came about to make sure that the. Pipes and valves that are in there are still okay, is that basically what we're after? Pipes and valves that are in there are still okay. Is that basically what we're after?
So there's six different items on this, and item number one is really the only one that pertains to the city that's gonna affect our contract. Uh, it'll affect the whole contract, but what the city pays, item number one is the only one affected and. Craig can talk a little bit more, but basically, the the valve body bolts along Twelfth Street were in the contract to be checked. Those have just been put in, so they don't need to be checked, so we could take that out of the contract, so that'd be a D D. But the ones going up Oaks Avenue, they were put in with the water tower, and so we wanted to add those to make sure they're okay, because they've been in there quite a few years. Um, we're gonna, what we're gonna do is we're gonna check the first couple of them, and if they look okay. And Craig's got a term of they've been what, wrapped in something or whatnot, but if they look, they should be okay.
So we're gonna check two of them that they're gonna actually discontinue, we're gonna dig down to the Ts and check the bolts at them points. And then cap that T off, because then lines are getting abandoned, the service line, so if we do that, then we will look and physically look at the bolts and see how they're looking. They look good, um, and we'll just go on to the next one. I wanna do, so we'll do two of them, if they all look good, we'll dig up one valve, check that, if that looks good, we'll call it good. Um, they've all been, uh, we use core blue bolts, uh, on that project, um, it's been wrapped in poly and backfilled with sand. And since we started doing that years ago, we haven't had an issue with any of the bolts, um, that's because of the hot soil conditions in different areas. So we're feel pretty good that, because this is supposed to got down on this project according to plans and as built, so feel pretty good that we won't have. Any expenses in this besides the physical digging up and expecting them, so.
Okay.
So I did talk with the engineers on this project, though, if we did need to replace all them, it's actually gonna be like a six hundred and some dollar D D. But if we don't need to replace them, it's even gonna be a larger savings for the city, so I, number one is a savings for the city. Um, the other items, two through six, these are changes, um, we added, you know, the service lines for the. H A D S project, because it made sense to do it with the road, we added that into our grant and our project, so these are just some changes on their end. Basically, capping some lines, moving some lines, um, putting in a drainage pipe, um, that's all we're gonna kind of pass through on to them. Some of these things should be covered under the grant, so it won't be such a cost to them. Um, I'm not sure if the drainage pipe and the flares will be covered under it, because they're not service lines. Um, regardless, if they're not covered, it'll still be a cost that'll get passed on to the H A D F.
Because in that contract, that's what I was gonna say, so in that contract, the H A D F was taken on, it was like the water, it was like the valves, right?
Right, like they're service lines.
Okay, this is what we're talking about here.
Yep, yep.
Okay. So is this a, just so I understand, is this a cost to the city or this?
It it will be a co- an increase in the contract, but will pass on any cost to the H A D F.
Because, okay, that makes sense, okay. And the H A D F is in favor of this.
They know this. They're the ones that have asked for these changes. It's in order to.
Just wanna make sure before we send them a bill.
Good face showing, if you guys wanna, you know, support fifty percent.
Sean, part of the reason they moved it is because we have a lot that has seven acres that realistically could be broken into two, which we think might happen. So where our service line is up here, we're just moving it down here, so that we, well, taking this one away, moving them here and here, so that it can serve us both if.
Both, both, okay, that makes sense.
Yeah, in the process of being two blocks.
All right. Motion, go ahead, Sam.
Make a motion to approve change order two for the Twelfth and Oak Street project.
Second. I tried to make the motion and then I got burned on the second.
I got burned on my other motion, man, so.
Any other discussion on this one?
Eighteen minutes, we're here.
Scott Nelson. If not, we'll vote. Jazz?
Yes.
Barrett?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
That's it.
Yes.
Thank you. Next up, review approve road maintenance agreement with the Hartford Township.
Motion to approve the agreement as presented.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. That's it.
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Barrett?
Yes.
Jazz? All right. Next up, this is a discussion only A V upgrades to the city council chambers.
Yeah, so I just wanna make sure we're on the right track of what we want, because we never really specified. Um, I did have, um, Midwest, um, audio come in and. Basically, he came in actually to the room to see what we currently have, what mic systems we have, what camera system we have. I says, you know, we wanna. From what I understand, we wanna be able to have a large screen where we can project things, where we can project the agenda, we can have the packet. If somebody has a presentation, we can, you know, plug that into a computer and show the presentation on that, so the council, the. The audience, everybody can see that, so what they are proposing is having a large TV on that wall, basically, so it can be seen by all. Um, they would put in a a new camera system that would have better upgrades as far as sound and, um, quality and visibility. It would work with our current, they would hook into our current mic system, so that'll help with the audio with it there. Um, what's on the screen will be remotely run by a computer, one of us will just sit here with the computer where, like I said, we can put up. The agenda, we can move to the different pieces in the packet, like I said, if, uh, uh, somebody has a presentation, we can put that in there. It could now all be remotely controlled there. Um, I told him what our budget was, he put all the numbers together, he was a little bit above the budget. He says he could bring it down for us if we would like, um.
Well, of course, we'd be.
Yeah, 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 well, like, yes, I said, this is my budget. Um, anything further is gonna cost more money, you know, too. Um, the camera will still just record, so we would can record just like we are doing now, and then we we put it on our website. It wouldn't, it won't live stream. Um, you can upgrade to being able to livestream. I don't know if that's. Something we wanna do right now. I did look at our website numbers to see how many people are watching our videos, um. I ran the last couple months, it looks like a couple hundred. And it hit, the video doesn't see the, it doesn't say that it's watched the whole thing, but they clicked on that I P address, so.
Couple months on average each meeting.
No, just for the month, for the whole, for those months, not.
I'm sorry, say again.
For the whole month.
Oh, gotcha, okay, okay.
So how how does that work, um, like if we wanna have virtual meetings? So I guess the other thing that I'm thinking about is like emergency management or something that might happen.
So work just like that one with the camera and the speaker system, um, it's run by a computer, so you can bring teams up on your computer and. You'll be able to see it, yep, yep, it'll be on this big screen, yep. Since it's all being run through a computer, like I said, whether you have Teams on there, Zoom or whatever, you'd be able to bring up that program and.
So you could join meetings if we need. The regionalization meetings or the county has something, it could facilitate some of that as well.
Does it address some of the concerns we had during COVID where we had one microphone and we couldn't hear?
Well, and that's what we said, that's good that we have these current mics hanging, because right now those don't play into our, you know, if we had a speaker system or even into that. But he, this system will be able to hook, there there's our console back in there, hook right into there where it should be able to pick up things better.
I guess that would be my request is to make sure it's, I mean, I will be nice to be able to look at materials together.
Yep.
Um, but also so that it's functional for.
Right.
And I think even if what a council member needs a remote in for a meeting, um. You know, I I've remoted in once or twice and then obviously the current system we have is just, you know, someone throws your own speaker on your phone and. I could only hear Arden or whoever's doing.
Travis's point.
I would just like to make sure we're set up for that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Who handles uploading the video to YouTube right now?
Jenny does it right now.
Jenny does, okay, and how long does that take her?
Well, I mean, she, we've got a program, so she plugs it in, and I mean, it takes a little while, a little bit, I mean, she can do other things while it's.
What are we talking for live streaming?
Huh?
What, when you say it would be an upgrade?
I'd have to get a price estimate on that.
I think you should get a price.
I think so, too, like, I, I mean, might as well.
Let's adjust the budget. What's our budget need to be?
Not the need to be, yeah, well, I'll see after see after that.
The only thing I'll be concerned about live streaming is, I have no problem doing that, but the only concern is, oh, we go into executive and we forgot to. In that slim chance, we forgot to turn off the recorder, you know, that's the only concern I would have with live streaming.
We're talking live streaming at our church and I always have it running on my phone, so you remember.
I I think.
Yeah.
I just think if we're gonna.
Good question.
Put technology in, we should, I'm not saying we need to livestream, I'm saying we should be able to.
Be able to, just see what the cost will be. Yep, I can go.
I agree.
Get a quote on that, too.
Or at least talk about.
Might as well just.
What that cost is.
I mean, if we put it off for three years, then it's just gonna be a more expensive.
Yeah, yeah, like I said, not that you have to implement it, but at least you have the equipment there to be able to.
What's the cost of that commercial grade TV?
Um, I did not put any prices in here, because if we were going to look for other quotes, I don't want to put the, or not quote to a disadvantage.
It's great that it runs for eighteen hours a day, but that's not the case here.
Right.
Chances are, that's gonna be a three, four thousand dollar TV where you could replace with a T C L ten times over rather than the commercial grade.
Yep.
By two cents.
I agree.
You guys ever consider a projector instead of a TV?
That's kind of what I was thinking, we might have, honestly, that would be a little bit larger.
Drop it down the screen.
Or drop down, you know, like if we're looking at sidewalk maps.
I think it would push you away from a projector. There's a whole other gamma.
I was gonna say, you got a whole other gamma with doing, being able to do various things with the computer, I mean.
Picture quality, you gotta buy a very, you're probably looking at ten thousand dollars for a projector that can equal the the, you know, the. The pixels and clarity of a TV.
It's all the same, I mean, the little bit that is gonna be used a couple hours a day every couple of weeks. I mean, we have a cheap projector we bought off of Amazon for a hundred bucks that presents in four K. Granted, you have to have a dark room, that's gonna be a a big component of it.
Right.
But if you find what's right.
The problem with the solar projector at the church, the problem is you couldn't replace the lamps, so you gotta replace the whole projector.
Yeah, you don't get. It's all replaced, yeah.
There's a problem.
Well, that's a thought.
I think it's worth it. Oh, yeah, I'll I'll check in to see if it's gonna be.
And then you got some.
Significant cost for that.
You got structurally about that thing. There's, I mean, there's pros and cons for sure.
I I just wouldn't be surprised if once we have it, it doesn't get used for other things, um.
All right, about twenty-five hundred bucks for an eighty-six inch commercial grade TV.
I know, ask about the the TV.
See if we can get some other, I know you've tried to get some other quotes, but.
I was gonna say, I just wanna make sure, like I said, we're headed down the right road and and if you guys do want other quotes, I can.
We're definitely.
That's why you don't want the right numbers out there.
We are on the right road.
We are.
I'm more.
And we're living lively now.
The other thing. I mean, is there any thought to putting an actual laptop with the TV? So that we have some other technology for connecting, like it would have its own address for meetings and things like that, instead of having to. Run it through a particular.
Well, smart TV, basically.
Okay, yeah.
Well, the smart TV should be able to cast from your laptop.
From your laptop and do it.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I I think we can.
Yeah. All right. Are we good or not?
I think that gives me some more.
Hey, we're miles ahead. Last of the year.
We cannot afford a whiteboard.
Three on the pressure. There's your weight.
Okay.
Yeah, there's your weight.
Last item on the regular agenda is discuss rescheduling the August sixth meeting. Because it conflicts with the chamber golf tournament.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Chamber moving their date of their golf. They could have gone to Thursday, but they went to Tuesday.
Yeah, but they don't want Thursday.
It's normally Wednesday. I don't know how many you guys plan to participate, um, some of the staff usually does. Then we have to, but it's something, if anybody, like any of you guys wanna participate, maybe consider if you wanna move it or not. But it does fall on a meeting night.
I'm in Chicago on Monday, so I I guess for my purposes, Wednesday would be work better, but I don't know if that's the consensus. I think we probably should reschedule it just so they can have a good time and.
Yeah, I'm cool with rescheduling it, because I'm gonna go off the net.
I was gonna say, and you need to get on and register and go.
Read to the general.
I know.
Should we do Wednesday at seven?
Wednesday, the, some of the.
All right, somebody, do we need a motion for that?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to move the, um, the August sixth council meeting to August seventh at the same time, seven.
I'll second it.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Jazz?
Yes.
Barrett?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
That's it. All right.
I expect to see all your registrations tomorrow morning.
But I don't wanna play, I will not. Is that your anniversary of seven?
Oh, no.
It's where I spent mine. It's where I spent mine.
Speak up when I say it's a conflict with anybody else.
My birthday's on the floor, so we were covering it, so I think it's seven.
Well, let's let's invite Wendy and have a good time. Hey, perfect. All right, do we have a motion to, uh, move into executive session for economic development, and do we need personnel for any reason? I don't.
Yeah.
What else to do legal?
Legal, economic development, and personnel. Motion to, okay, you have a second? All in favor?
Hi.
You got next time, man.
Yes. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? All right. Thank you.